Good evening, it is now 6:30 and I will call the August 15th Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Thank you Commissioners for joining us.
Fourteenth.
Is it the fourteenth today? It is the fourteenth, I'm sorry. Staff, thank you for joining us. Our first order, our first item on the agenda today is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes from staff or the Commission on the agenda? No changes, I would stand for a motion.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion carries. All those opposed, the motion carries. It's gonna take me a second.
The second, thank you.
The second item is the approval of the minutes from the July 24th, 2017 Planning Commission Meeting. Has everybody had a chance to review those notes? And are there any changes? No changes? Any changes from staff?
No changes.
Alright, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second, we, and I will abstain because I was not at that meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries. Alright, our first item, third item, is a public hearing for an application of Dean and Barbara Johnson Holding for a PUD Amendment for Building and Site Modifications and Drive-Thru located at 1404 County Road 42 West, and Ms. Dean is presenting.
Dean, no relation to the applicant.
Oh yeah.
I think that's a first name anyway. Good evening Chair Members of the Commission. We do have a PUD Amendment. The existing PUD, just for some history, was originally approved in the late seventies, was part of an overall Burn Hill addition, thirty-six to forty acre PUD with multiple parcels. The intent of the site was intended as retail, as much of the remainder of the PUD. The specific site was divided in, I believe, nineteen eighty-four or nineteen eighty-five, at the time the Precision Tune Auto, or at the time it was a different auto care company, was built on the site. Specific site, it's at the intersection of County Road 42 and Irving. It is abutted by B3 PUD, surrounding the site and across the street. I should point out, as we have the aerial photo up, that there is existing sidewalk along the west, not on the property, but adjacent to the property. However, along the south, we have the, County Road 42 has an easement on the southern portion of the property that runs east and west, providing that sidewalk connection throughout the corridor. Existing site conditions, I should also point out, before I switch slides, there's an existing retaining wall in the south portion of the property. That's proposed to be removed and pushed further south to accommodate additional parking. There is also, let's see here. Much of the footprint of the building will also remain, and I'll go through the slides, that shows some building modifications. So, kind of difficult to read, but this is the existing site conditions. Maybe if I go back to the aerial, that might show a little better. The footprint of the building, we've got landscaping in between the different properties. TCF is to the east, and then we have back access to the building on the north part of the property, and that will be changing with the proposal. So the proposal is basically to reuse much of the existing building. Part of the building will be reduced, about four hundred square feet. Currently, the building is approximately sixty-five hundred square feet. So the eastern portion will be reduced to accommodate a drive-through. So, customers would come in off of Irving and circulate through south to the drive-through along the east. A menu board would be located here, and a drive-through pickup window located here where the arrow is. As pointed out before, the existing retaining wall would be pushed south to accommodate additional parking. Because the existing use is currently automotive in nature, the required parking is much less than the, or is less than the retail that is proposed for the site. So we have three tenants that are proposed to occupy the building. The drive-through tenant is tenant one along the western portion of the building, and then tenant two and three along the other tenant bays. Parking is based off of the seat count and employee count, and as well as the retail occupancy of the building. The proposed site does meet our parking requirements on-site. By our calculations and by what was presented as part of the application, there are forty-seven stalls that are proposed, forty-three stalls would be required, again based off of the information that was provided. It's the grading plan that we can go back to if needed. Hang on just a minute. I have the wrong PowerPoint up. This just gives you better perspective, unfortunately that was not in the original PowerPoint that I had up that I was reviewing. I apologize. This just gives you a perspective of what is out there today. And I was gonna go over the architecture, again I apologize, there was a mix-up, I should note this. Submitted in the applicant's packet as part of the staff report and part of the attachments, there was a version that showed two tenants. In the last submittal from the applicant, it was changed from two tenants to three tenants. That architecture was not included in your packets, however, it was analyzed as part of the staff report, so I should note that. And then when the PowerPoint was initially created, it pulled some of those elevations over, and that's why there was a little mix-up right now, so I apologize for that. This does give a perspective of the proposed changes that are proposed for the site. The existing building, again, has the garage door facade along the south side, the precision tune, along with brick along the north side of the building, as well as some wood facade. So, the proposal does, does provide for a facade improvement, an improvement from what's out there today. The applicant is proposing to use a mix of materials, brick, ethos, composite siding. We do have a sample board that's behind me that shows the different mix of materials that are proposed. Again, this version does show the two tenant version. However, the same types of materials are proposed on the three-tenant version, just a little bit different application. The proposal does meet our height requirements. One of the things that the applicant is proposing to do is add parapet walls to the existing building to create some height and visibility to County Road 42. As you, so I go back to this slide. The site does, it is lower than the street view. So to help create some, again, some height, some visibility, the parapet walls are proposed, also to add some interest to the building. The, I should point out, with the parapet walls, signage is proposed over the roof deck of the building. We do have a code requirement that talks about parapet walls extending around the perimeter of the building. There is a slight parapet wall that's proposed on the north portion of the property at varying points. However, it does not raise, in staff's opinion, high enough to create a continuous parapet wall, screening the backsides of the parapet. Staff is recommending that changes are made to the architecture to better meet City Code requirements, or to meet City Code requirements. That would not only help with the architecture of the building, but also help with the, with the sign deviation that's requested. There are deviations requested for the amount of windows facing the south portion of the property. At twenty-four percent, City Code requires twenty-five percent. Staff does support that request as it's minor in nature, and it does, the overall facade does help to improve the existing site conditions. There is also a deviation requested for the fiber cement paneling and siding. City Code requires a maximum of twenty-five percent. Twenty-seven percent is requested for this building. It's possible with the addition of the parapet walls that that percentage could increase, however, staff is supportive of that request. Staff does recommend an awning along the north elevation to help provide protection from drivers that are accessing the drive-up window, to help shelter from precipitation, and also to help add some architectural interest to the building. Landscaping, the overall variety meets our City Code requirements. It is a pretty limited site as far as what you can do by adding additional landscaping. It's a, not even an acre, and we're working with some existing site conditions, as well as easement on the property, the sidewalk easement that County Road 42 maintains. And so, they're meeting the mixed requirement, however, the overall percentage requirement, a deviation is requested. Staff is in support of the deviation request. It's from, twenty-four point six percent is requested, City Code requires twenty-five percent, so it's pretty minor in nature. Another deviation that's requested is the sidewalk that's abutting the building, between the parking and the building. Four point eight feet is requested, City Code requires six feet. And again, because of the site limitations, because of the constraints, staff is in support of that request. Overall, there are some deviations to the, to the proposal. I can certainly, I think I ran through most of these. Can go through them. One, I spoke about, two, I covered, three I covered. Number four, the sight lighting does exceed our requirements. It's basically too bright, proposed on the western portion of the site. Staff is recommending that that is reduced to one-foot candle. New lighting is proposed as part of the proposal, so I, the applicant is open to meeting that requirement. We went through the window coverage, went through the fiber cement material. A deviation is requested for the ethos. City Code requires that, within twenty-four inches of grade, that ethos is not applied. On that south elevation, there is a portion where ethos is proposed, along tenant two and three. Staff is proposing that that's changed to meet City Code requirements. And then again, wall signs are above the roof line. Staff suggests with the continuance of a parapet, that wall signs could be, that the proposal would not require deviations if this, if parapets were added. Staff does recommend approval of the proposal. And there are a number of things that staff is requesting be provided prior to any release of site or building modifications. One, that documentation is provided. I didn't note this in my first part of my presentation. Along with the sidewalk easement, there's also a pipeline easement along the southern portion of the property. So any work within that area, staff is requesting that permission is given to work within that area. Also, the north portion of the property adjacent to the site, there are some potential improvements, such as retaining wall and some site grading landscaping that could affect that northern portion of the property. As, as shown in the plans, staff is asking for documentation from the property owner that they're, that they release, that they grant any, any work on their site. I should note that we did receive a letter from the adjacent property owner, and that is in your packet. Was submitted later, late today, and was hand-delivered as well as emailed to the, to the Planning Commission, and will be included as part of the record. Prior to release of any building permit issuance, the photometric plan shall be amended to meet our City Code requirements. Prior to any building permit issuance, the ethos shall be revised adjacent to the grade. Prior to any building permit issuance, then an awning shall be added to that north elevation. We also are recommending that above the south and west elevations, that awnings are added. That would be along tenant one, to kind of mimic what's in front of tenant two and tenant three. Staff is also recommending decorative wall lighting as part of the plan. Prior to building permit issuance, that the parapet shall be revised around the perimeter of the building. And we're recommending that additional details added to the, to the elevations, which could include cornices, again, for some additional character and architectural interest. Pretty standard, prior to any issuance of building permit, that the necessary securities are in place, and a master sign plan, because there's more than two tenants, or multiple tenants, that a master sign plan shall be provided, and any installation of signs shall meet City Code. With that, the applicant is in the audience to help answer any questions. Certainly, if there are any questions, I'll stand. We do have our engineer here as well.
Thank you very much, Misteen. Before I turn it over to the Commission, I just wanted one point of clarification on the letter from Time Properties LLC. Their B item says it appears a developer will install a retaining wall at the property line between the two properties. And goes on to say that they should be the ones to maintain that retaining wall. Is that, is that a confusion about where that retaining wall sits? Because that would be on the north, the south side.
There, there is a small, there is some work that's proposed along the north part of the property. So any maintenance associated with that, I believe there's a small retaining wall.
Yeah, I can answer that. Chair and Commissioners, there is a small wall. Right now, the way the plan shows, on kind of the northeast quadrant of the site, and then midway along the site, there's a wall, a short wall also proposed. The way it stands right now, after receiving this letter, which I just read through here today when I got here, there probably will have to be something done to shift that site, because right now the proposed grading plan does go off of the existing site on the north. It shows going over the property line by roughly three or four feet to tie those contours in. Being there's only three feet of green space between the curb and the property line, there's probably, I would assume they would have to get a wall put up right behind the curb, and then tie that back in. So I can, I would imagine we're gonna see something shifted just a little bit with the site to the south. I don't think it's, it's worth having to go through everything over, but I do think that they'll have to abide by tying those contours in before it crosses the property line.
Okay. Alright, I would turn it over to the Commission for any questions for staff at this time. No questions for staff?
Sure.
Mr. Banky.
Yeah, I think what you're looking at, Brian, is that currently a wall is shown on the east side of the property.
Correct.
And that wall is currently shown on this property, but at the property line.
Correct.
And with the grading needed, the grading limits do show it going into the property to the north. And I'm looking at the site plan, I think, there we go. Yeah, so right now there's a retaining wall along the right edge.
Correct. On the, on the east side, that retaining wall is shown right on the property line.
Yep.
And again, that, that, you know, that is feasible, although, you know, for maintenance, things of that nature, you know, it'd be nice to have a little bit of a buffer there. And on the north side of the property, you can see on the grading plan the proposed contours, or there's also a dash construction limits line there, which you can clearly see is over the property line. So, those items there will need to be addressed.
Further questions then? I noticed it's a pretty tight site, and my initial impression was from a, from a traffic standpoint, it would have been nice to have another access out of this parking lot. Because it sort of forces you into, if you don't know where you're going, you're going around the drive-through.
That's correct. We didn't, we didn't, I mean, we looked at traffic from a standpoint of the city and how it would impact city streets and whatnot, that, we have no concerns with that at all. As far as circulation within the site, obviously one access point is out, you know, is, can be, can be problematic at times. I think with the limitations of the site, and where it's at right now, I don't think there was any way of presenting another access without pushing it too close to an intersection, so.
Sure, and then obviously with the letter, it doesn't sound like it would work very well at this point, anyway.
Correct.
I guess you aren't the fire department, but the fire department's looked at this and they're okay with building access, given mainly.
They have.
And is some of that because Burn Hill Plaza's parking lots are very close to the site as well, and they can get to it across the green space?
That's correct.
Okay. I took a look at the original two-tenant layout, and I thought, that's not too bad. It needs a little tweaking, but it's not too bad of a look. And then I saw the three-unit, the three-tenant one, and I went, oops, I felt like they went backward. When you talk about adding parapet, does staff, is staff after a continuous top edge that's the same all the way around the building?
All the way around, of course. You know, taking into account building code requirements, any wind loads, any snow, snow loads, snow removal off the roof and allowing for drainage, but, but yes, continuous around the building.
Doesn't that sort of run counter to our architectural guidelines, where we encourage multiple parapet heights? I think currently it's checked as a meets requirement. If we went to a single height, that would sort of take that off the table in terms of an acceptable, what do I call it? It wouldn't become a, let's see, it's on the page three of the architectural. Provide a variety of heights, parapets, and cornices, other design schemes, right now it's marked yes, that becomes a no then?
They do provide varying heights of parapets. They do provide, you know, whether it's along the south, on the corners, or even on the north, there are some varying heights. There is some parapet wall.
Sure.
But it doesn't, it doesn't continue and provide, I guess, screening of the backside. So I think you can accomplish the varying heights, yet still provide screening of mechanical equipment, and then still provide, at least getting close to, as close as possible to the code requirement for the, for the signs above the roof deck.
Right, and that was sort of where I was going at it. The parapets could be as tall as the text, and wouldn't have to be as tall as the rest of the parapets, still provide the screening, but yet meet the code requirement for no signage above the, that would extend above the roof line. I don't know if anybody else noticed, but three of the other buildings in the area have signage above the parapet, including the newest two constructions in the, in the shopping center. Is that something the staff is working on, or that needs to be changed by them, or?
From what I understand, if there's an awning treatment, if there's an arcade, if there's cornices that kind of bump out, if there's some sort of non-flat feature that's incorporated as part of the design, or if there's actual physical space that you can almost walk under, like a vestibule or something, that that's acceptable.
Okay.
Specific examples, unfortunately, I can't speak to, but.
He's hurtler and habby-lotty. But both of them have that extended entry area, and so both of those facades are treated as a height separate from the building proper. Okay, that explains that. Is the city, is the staff making specific recommendation as to what they would like to see instead of the ethos within twenty-four inches of grade?
Staff didn't specifically call it out. I think it would be acceptable to use one of the materials that they're already proposing. You know, maybe it's continuing the brick that's along the north side at the base of the building. Somehow incorporating one of the materials within that area would be acceptable, I think, but flexible.
Sure. Well, I think, I think your math too, though, on the, on the ethos and the fiber cement, depending on the material of the additional wall height, the parapets, it could actually, not
Provide a variety of heights, parapets, and cornices, other design schemes. Right now it's marked yes. That becomes a no then.
They do provide varying heights of parapets. They do provide, you know, whether it's along the south, on the corners, or even on the north, there are some varying heights. There is some parapet wall.
Sure.
But it doesn't it doesn't continue and provide, I guess, screening of the backside. So I think you can accomplish the varying heights, yet still provide screening of mechanical equipment. And then still provide at least getting close to, as close as possible to the code requirement for the, for the signs above the roof deck.
Right. And that was sort of where I was going at it. The parapets could be as tall as the text and wouldn't have to be as tall as the rest of the parapets. Still provide the screening, but yet meet the code requirement for no signage above the, that would extend above the roof line. I don't know if anybody else noticed, but three of the other buildings in the area have signage above the parapet, including the newest two constructions in the, in the shopping center. Is that something the staff is working on or that needs to be changed by them or?
From what I understand, if there's an awning treatment, if there's an arcade, if there's cornices that kind of bump out, if there's some sort of non-flat feature that's incorporated as part of the design. Or if there's actual physical space that you can almost walk under like a vestibule or something, that that's acceptable.
Okay.
Specific examples unfortunately I can't speak to, but.
He's hurtler and hobby lobby. But both of them have that extended entry area. And so both of those facades are treated as a height separate from the building proper. Okay, that explains that. Is the city, is the staff making specific recommendation as to what they would like to see instead of the EFS within 24 inches of grade?
Staff didn't specifically call it out. I think it would be acceptable to use one of the materials that they're already proposing. You know, maybe it's continuing the brick that's along the north side at the base of the building. Somehow incorporating one of the materials within that area would be acceptable, I think, but flexible.
Sure. Oh, I think, I think your math too, though, on the, on the EFS and the fiber cement. Depending on the material of the additional wall height, the parapets, it could actually not only drive the EFS up, it could also drive the window, the window area down. And that is, you know, that's not something. We're actually looking at 24 versus 25 right now. Actually, I think it's even closer than that. But if the parapet walls significantly add square footage, then that, that's going to go way down.
That's correct.
One other question, Miss Dean, then. Shouldn't the deviations be listed in the recommendation? Or are they, are they just brought over from the staff report? And I guess that's just for later. I thought some of them were there, but not all of them. And I could be wrong. No, yeah, there's definitely some of the deviations that are not shown under the recommendations currently.
I probably should have carried that over.
It's okay. Okay.
I think Deb wanted to say something.
Just a note for that, the deviations do get called out when this goes to city council in the findings of fact. And then there's a separate condition. So those will be all identified in the findings of fact, how the deviations and benefits are. Thank you.
Okay. I think I'll, hold any other questions for?
All right. Commissioner Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Dean, I would just follow up on Commissioner Benkey's earlier comment. When he noted that this is indeed a very tight site. I was okay with two tenants when I looked at it. Third, I got some, a little concerned. In the first tenant one is will provide a drive-through service. My concern is about stacking. People driving up, are there going to be two windows? Sometimes you have one window where you go, you pay, and the other window you collect your, whatever you bought. So will there be two windows and what of stacking? How would this impact the overall traffic flow on this site? I looked in the packet for commissioners and I did not see any, any explanation about the drive. All it says, drive-through service.
Commissioner Singh, there is only one drive-through window. There is not a second payment window. From what I understand, it's a fast service restaurant. I don't know if the applicant can disclose who it might be at this time. Looks like no. From a city code standpoint, whether it's two retail tenants and the fast service or the one fast service and one other retail, they still meet our parking requirements. As far as the drive-through circulation, because the stacking occurs privately on their property, they do provide adequate stacking per our city code requirements. I believe it's eight cars for stacking and they show more than that. Yes, it does impact, you know, privately, potentially cars wanting to get in and out of parking spaces quickly. However, it does meet our city code requirements in that respect.
Ms. Dean, I, Mr. Chair, Ms. Dean, I wasn't concerned about parking. I think you have adequate parking, but when you put the two together, I was more concerned about the free flow of traffic and how it'd impact people even using the other, the other two tenants. And we have, we have to be concerned about people's safety when we are looking at these things. And that's, that's my concern. But if it meets city codes, then I take it that that's okay. Thank you very much.
Respect to the drive-through, yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. Is there any other questions for staff? Mr. Bradrick.
Thank you. Miss Dean, I just want to clarify the, as you stated, the review of the applicant with staff and all the requirements was done with three tenants, not two. Correct. So to our questions about, you know, the, the end result is the staff review was knowing it was going to be three tenants, it just didn't change at the last minute. All the review was done.
So as initially submitted, it was a two-tenant submittal. With the last, so when we take in an application, there's a series of kind of back and forth, comment letter, response, comment letter, response. And the last response that we received, it was a three-tenant. The staff report is based off of the three-tenant proposal. The footprint of the building didn't change. The parking layout didn't change. What changed was the floor plan and the elevations. Primarily, those would be the two changes.
So correct me if I'm wrong, it could be one tenant or three tenants. It's more about the physical space in the building and driving to parking and stuff. The division from a two-tenant to a three-tenant in our code really isn't addressed. It's more about square footage of the building, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Recommendation number two, was that driven off of a letter or was that typical? That seems odd to me from the standpoint of, you know, we see required parking easements. This is a shared driveway. Can you give me a little more information on specifically what we're asking for in number two?
Do you want to answer that?
Sure, I can answer it. Chair and commissioners, the reasoning behind this, typically, yes, we'll have standard utility easements where there'll be private utilities. Because this is a larger diameter natural gas pipeline, there's a large 50-foot easement. We thought it would be prudent to get some sort of, and I believe it might even be within the original easement language that the city and Northern Natural Gas Company had with that one. So we just want to make sure that they are aware something's going on. Things are not changing really from what is in there right now, so I don't see there being any issue. It's really more of a, we just want them to know for sure that something's going on because again, it is a high-pressure, larger diameter gas pipeline.
But number two states that is in reference to the adjacent property to the north.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Not, not the prop, not the, the gas line easement on 42.
Let me just look at that condition real quick.
I believe that that's related to, the plan shows the grading and impacts on the lot to the north. So if that's going to be there, then those folks need to give approval.
Absolutely, okay.
In the form of a temporary easement or permanent easement, that type of thing.
Sorry. Well, you got, you got explanation on another easement.
We don't see it as documentation. We see it as some sort of release of, of something if they're going to be. So that, that wording seemed odd to me, so. The difference between number three and number six were, so if I understood, Miss Dean, your explanation correctly is as the building sets today, it does not meet our code on the west side of the building. But the new lighting and the revised building will? Did I misunderstand that? I'm sorry if I did.
So unfortunately, I do not know what the current site lighting projections are.
Maybe you're wrong. Okay, I might have misunderstood what you said.
What was received was a proposed photometric that does show different lighting that is proposed. So that new lighting, because it's new, parking lot lighting, will have to, we're recommending that they meet our photometric standards and code. As far as the building wall lighting, certainly that would be included in any photometric plan as well. Typically, the wall lighting typically doesn't affect at the property line. But that would be included as part of any revised plan as well and analyzed at that point.
Okay. So this application's relatively similar, a little bigger than what we did with Subway where we tucked the, the drive around the back. I was, and I apologize if I missed it in the background, there's nothing in here in reference to a request for a variance of any sort of sign. And we do have a, a single pylon sign today. That, that stays and that, there'd be no variance or that's well within code and they're not asking for anything to change there.
As part of their proposal, no changes were proposed. So any sign application would have to meet city code requirements unless they requested otherwise.
Okay. So obviously there's a plan to reuse the pylon sign and, okay.
Applicant.
I just want to make sure we weren't creating other roadblocks as we go ahead with the application. Chair, that's the only questions I have at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there any other questions for staff? Mr. Bradrick or Benkey?
Backward from what Commissioner Bradrick just talked about, the, the menu board for Subway was against a residential neighborhood. And because of that, there were a lot of restrictions placed on it. This is a business use against a business use, so we shouldn't see anything like, any need for that. And any signage is going to be reflected, going to be reviewed as part of the sign permits, including the menu board?
Correct. That would also, that would be included as well as incorporated into any master sign plan that's requested because it's multi-tenant.
Okay. And the, back to the parapets, does the increase in the parapet and the increase in the wall area offer them an advantage in terms of signage then? Is the size of the building then bigger and they're allowed more signage?
It would increase their elevation, therefore increasing their percentage allowed. So, so yes, it could. It would.
Given, back to the parking and the quantities that were calculated, you're currently looking at one tenant has a restaurant-type use and its parking requirement. And the other two are currently not looked at as a restaurant. Is there any significant variation between the parking requirements for those two uses that would impact the amount of parking needed should it become another restaurant or something else?
It could.
Or the more intensive use?
It could, depending on the seat count, depending on the employee count. With any proposal, they're going to have tenant improvements. So that would be reviewed at time of building permit as well as, as part of their occupancy, any change out. So it's something that would be reviewed and analyzed. And certainly if they came in with three restaurants and they far exceeded our code and they didn't have a joint parking agreement with the neighboring property, that's something that we would, as staff, say. Something that either you're going to need a deviation or variance from code, or it's something we simply can't support.
Okay. And then further back again to Commissioner Singh's comments. Looks like the stacking plan from the, I think it's the site plan. Yeah, site plan. Shows 10 cars, that one, yes. It shows 10 cars on there. But I, I can see exactly what Commissioner Singh's talking about. Should a car, I mean, there's really no defined, I mean, it's a two-way parking lot. The drive aisle's two-way, has to be two-way.
Correct.
But there's nothing here, as a matter of fact, that the, the drive aisle seems to bring you to the outgoing lane. It, it seems to bring you across the, the two-lane driveway right now and, and definitely create a traffic problem for the people who are parked at the far eastern end of the lot. And if there's more than 10 stacked, which we don't know if that would or would not happen. But nonetheless, the, the traffic is going to be coming in to this drive-through and there are going to be people who are going to want to get back out of that spot and get out.
Correct.
Okay. And can you help me with how much we can help the applicant with our opinions and observations about how that should work?
Commissioner Benkey, we do typically, when we review our initial comment letters, we'll go back and state things such as this as, as far as traffic flows, of that nature. Again, because they met code with stacking, you're, you're absolutely right. If there, if there was to be 13 cars stacked up during lunch hour or something of that, there would potentially be up to three or four stalls. Maybe even more than that on that east end of the parking lot that would, that would be impacted. With, with the proposal at hand, again, there was, if, for drive-through opportunities, there was no other way to really make this work. So we, we didn't, we didn't comment as long as it met code, but it's a valid point. It's definitely, it's definitely a point that can be taken.
Well, and you know, I, I think the Commissioner Singh's comment, well, I think it goes beyond the stacking issue. I think it's even just the people coming in to get in line and how that would impact somebody trying to exit the other direction. And that's why I think I was commenting that it really felt like it would be great if there could be some accommodation for another outlet to this parking lot.
Correct. I can't disagree.
Thank you.
I guess I would follow up with that question, Ryan. Logistically, would it be possible to move the drive-through farther to the west of the building? That would allow the backup stacking to happen behind the building, rather to the side and wrapping around the front? And maybe that's something I can ask the applicant when we bring him up. Was that considered at all throughout this plan?
I, I do not believe it was, was considered. I don't know what code is, if there's, if there's a distance that an open window might be from, from a corner. That's more of a planning item, but if there isn't, it surely could go to the west further.
If I may, the only thing I'm seeing here is there's probably some kind of an interior architectural design layout for the kitchen and the other parts of this facility that we aren't privy to because we don't know who the tenant is that is probably driving this to some, to some degree.
Why don't we bring the applicant forward and we'll beat you guys up for a little bit and ask you some questions? When you guys come up. If you can tell us your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Mark Crowe with Chauva Properties Minneapolis, Minnesota.
Mark, can you say your last name one more time?
Crowe.
Thank you. There was some, you've probably heard some concern about the stacking flow of the parking lot. Is there anything you can address to that that you maybe thought of or?
Sure, sure. Well, you know, Patrick, my civil engineer right back there. We've gone through, you know, 20 different versions of this with a tenant. And the tenant has pretty stringent criteria. And the way they, you know, their space is laid out with their back of the house and it's the way it's laid out is kind of the way it has to be laid out for the tenant. It meets code and, you know, so we think it's the best we're going to get on a small site like this. We even reached out to the neighbors. Maybe we could buy an easement from you so we could wrap it further along. We wouldn't have to subtract, because we have to subtract a little bit of building right now. And it's a lot more economical to buy easement from the neighbor if possible. But nobody wanted to play ball with us, so we had to do what we had to do on, on the site.
Obviously, the goal here is to get booming businesses, so stacking would be ultimately a good thing.
And we're, the tenant wanted seven stacking spaces and I think we're at 10 or 11, 10 maybe, I think. So we're, we beat what they're acquiring.
Okay. Is there any questions for Mr. Grogwell? We have him up here from the commission.
Mr. Chair? I guess the biggest thing that I have an issue with is how the building changed when you went from a two-tenant to a three-tenant. Can you address why you needed to change the building design for adding a tenant?
We would love to do two tenants. We had a tenant that was at the 99 yard line. We thought we were going to lease and they, you know, this is where deals work, you know, until it's done, it's not done. And they fell apart, but the, the tenants, replacement tenants wanted their own identity. So that's why it was, you know, changed around so you could see that they were a separate tenant, didn't just blend together. And that was a, you know, kind of a tenant engineered redesign.
Okay. I guess to me, from a design sense, I would see as an opinion that signage could take care of that without breaking up the building quite the way it did. However, have you gone through and thought about how you might address the staff's conditions for the parapet?
Which part of that condition?
Well, essentially, you're not allowed to have, oh, actually, why don't you read it, Dean, Miss Dean?
Eight.
Number eight, yeah.
Wall signs above the roof line, or the following deviations are requested, wall signs above the roof line or without a continuous parapet wall. So again, because of the wall, the wall signs are above that roof deck and it's not continuous. Staff is recommending that it, that parapet continue around the entire building. Again, keeping in mind the flexibility to add some variations in the, in the roof lines. But yet still accomplishing.
Maybe could we see the elevation to, I might help to, yeah.
Yeah, and the continuous parapet, I had a, I had a question on that. We, because of snow loads, you know, we have kind of a break there so that the wind can go through. And else we'd have to redesign the roof to be really structural. and else we'd have to redesign the roof to be really structurally, this big, go, the cost would go through the roof. So when you're saying the continuous parapet, do you mean just continues around the whole building? Or going up and down or, or east-west or per se?
Uh, yeah, basically this picture, you can see that the text for your tenant, that you can see the text for your tenant one, tenant two, tenant three.
Okay, also, you just want them all connected and?
No, no, the, the parapet in between those, those facades is lower than, than this, the, the text, and that's currently not allowed.
You can raise it something like that, maybe even increase this, um, on the back as well.
I mean, we can. Yeah, I, I see what you're saying. I mean, that was tenant-designed, you know, they have that, that real, you know, standout that, here's my, you know, here's my store. Um, so when you, you want us to adjust it, by how, how much are you thinking? Or maybe that's a conversation we can, we can dig into. I mean, we're willing to modify some things, but, uh, that, that's really, you know, the design was tenant-driven.
And I, and I think that we can make recommendations to staff in, in terms of what our opinion, and it would become a, a vote issue of what our opinion would be to have it comply or have it more comply than it does now. But, um, you know, we're not trying to sit here and design it for you.
Yeah.
I mean, clearly, if you have a tenant that's asking for something, that's one thing. It's just that it currently doesn't meet our, our ordinances. And I guess the only other things was i-if you were amenable to the condition, um, at the facades on tenants two and three where, you know, you're bringing ephesus all the way down to the ground and that's, you know, is there something else?
Yeah.
Have you sort of looked at these conditions, and are you okay with them, or?
Yeah, I, I mean, my architect wasn't able to attend tonight because he's at another meeting, but, uh, I think we're, our, our plans are ready to, you know, fix that, that ephesus is a, that's not a big deal for us. So they'll be fixed.
Okay.
Um, I guess the only other question I would have is the letter from the neighbor, and I'll leave that for you.
The letter from the neighbor for Time Properties?
Yeah.
Well, states for, I mean, did you get a copy of the letter that?
Uh, just a few minutes before it came up here, but.
Does any of that seem, you should be okay with that?
Not a big deal. We can work around, we can work on site if need be, and we can also have a conversation. We, we play well with others, so.
That's good, okay. Um, if there's any other questions for Mr. Grog, um, I would move to the public hearing. Is there any other questions? Oh, we have you? No questions, all right, so, um, we might ask you again, but probably.
Oh, that's fine, I'm, I'm here, so.
All right, so I will, um, sorry, I got my notes here on the computer instead of paper this time. Um, I would, uh, I will open the public hearing, and if there's anybody that would like to speak to this issue, please come to the podium, say your name and address for the record. And seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing, and I will turn it over to the commission for discussion, motion. Where are we at?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Benke.
Um, point of discussion, I guess, I guess I'm seeing, I'm seeing that we have a project that, to me, is, is good for the area, but it, it's not quite totally thought through yet. And I guess the letter from the neighbor really bothered me right off the bat, and I realize, you know, that the applicant just sort of minimized it, my opinion. But nonetheless, you know, if he's willing to work with them, I'm just not a hundred percent sure that you can just simply work with him, given the tightness of the site. Now I'm, now I've lost the letter. There it is. Um, you know, there's retaining wall probably can be dealt with, you know, uh, there's more retaining wall now, probably because of grading. Uh, the trees that they're probably getting credit for, uh, might not be allowed by the neighbor. I don't see that their item D about the building height variances or sign code variances. I, I think that that's pretty, pretty easily, uh, from what the applicant just talked about. It sounds like we can make that work to a point. It's just, we're gonna end up with a, an approval here without a, a plan that matches again. And that's always a concern of mine.
Commissioner Benke, I, you know, as far as the items on the letter, um, we have condition number two that they have to sign off on it before release of any improvements to the site. Um, so we know that these things have to be addressed, um, before anything can happen. Um, as far as the parapet goes, I believe we have that addressed. But to your point, obviously, the building will change.
Let me finish.
I'll go it. Commissioner?
Oh, sorry.
Well, I'm sorry.
No, no, I, I, I think, and I think that in this case, it's probable, it's probably, but we can give staff a significant amount of direction, and I, I, I'm less concerned about it than I have maybe have expressed on previous projects. I think the key is, I think, is, is talking through the recommendations and getting them documented well. We give staff an awful lot to do, and following up on this stuff, in my opinion, isn't something that we should always just leave it in their lap if we can handle it for them.
Are there any recommendations specifically that you wanna address?
Um, well, I, I think that, as I mentioned, I would increase detail on some of them. For example, uh, well, number one, number two, number three, I think those are all pretty straightforward. Number four, obviously, the applicant said he can do that. But I guess the problem I would have is that it needs to be replaced with another material. And if that other material happened to be the wood, does that mean it might meet code? But maybe it isn't what we're after, and I think this is where I have problems just sort of turning it over, without good direction. I mean, is masonry would be a more typical request for that area, and I would probably wanna add masonry to that. The awnings, I, I think that's pretty clear from staff. Um, the wall, like the decorative wall lighting, I think that's pretty clear, and that's also an item that's in the architectural guidelines that's marked no currently. So I think that, that's where that probably came from. Um, I think that the issue of the parapet, um, the applicant's concern about structure, I think, is valid from the architectural and the, and the building standpoint, but it, it still needs to meet our ordinance. And the thing that I'd be concerned about there is that the building went, would go from having a relatively jagged top to having a flat top. And I think in this case that the recommendation, in my mind, would in, include information about having different heights. And it's clear that the text is not all the way to the top of the current parapet, so there, that line could come to the top of the text and meet, meet code then. I think the one that cr, that doesn't really have much here is the corn, number eight, the cornices. You know, how do they resolve that? You know, what is that? That one is completely, I, I don't know what that would be then. Is it simply building up the top? I mean, obviously, there's a lot of different ways of doing a cornice, and that becomes something then that's, we don't get to see until it's up. Um, and then eight, nine, or nine and ten, then I, those are pretty, pretty straightforward. I would probably suggest we add a recommendation just enumerating the, the deviations, just to have it in here as well. Uh, even if it's just addressing them as the P U D deviations, that they're all acceptable.
Acceptable by the commission?
By, by our recommendation to the city council.
That we accept the P U D deviations as stated?
Yeah.
I don't have any issue with that. Does any other commissioners?
That's not been our past practice, Chair.
It hasn't?
No, it has not.
So we never?
We've never had it. I'm sorry, Chair.
No, absolutely.
We, I, I, I don't remember where we've added a condition that's specifically called out deviations prior in the, in the application.
Really?
No, as far as I remember, we have never done that.
Okay, I'll take that one back.
Um, Chair, members of the commission, um, there was some discussion, I, I don't know if you're leaning towards this or not, um, but with the parapet increasing, um, and the potential for the window, um, coverage to decrease, um, if you wanted to add that as part of your recommendation, that would be appropriate.
You're right, and I forgot that one, I was.
To add some flexibility to the applicant.
You know, what happens if the window area drops ten percent because of the additional square footage of wall area? I think that's probably a little strong, just doing the math in my head, but yet, probably not that far off. Would we be okay with a fourteen percent glass coverage instead of a twenty-four percent?
I would think if it got to a certain amount, then staff, the ordinance would, or, kick in.
Well, except we're, we're offering that as a deviation, and we'd have to put a limit on it where it would have to come back.
I would consult with Ms. Dean, I mean, the reason we're deviating is because of the, to, we were about a point one or, we were within a point five deviation from the code, so it wasn't significant. If it got to be ten percent, that would be a significant deviation.
Yeah, I think that was green space, and I think the window is one percent. But nonetheless, it is, it is minimal right now, but it might not be if, as the building changes. And I, I'm not always trying to slow things down, but yet, this one, or there's enough things here. I'm just wondering if we shouldn't see it in two weeks with all these changes made. You know, I mean, it, it is only two weeks, and they are well out on their extension currently.
Well, I guess I would stand for a motion and?
Oh, Mr. Chair, I'm not gonna.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Singh.
Um, if I may ask, um, as a chair with your permission, ask Ms. Dean a question regarding snow. Um, how will the applicant take care of snow? Uh, we get a lot of snow here. Um, will these, will there be room for snow to be piled up, uh, plowing the snow and pile it up in somewhere in the, in that, uh, area? Or what, what's gonna happen with snow?
Um, as currently proposed, um, they are proposing, um, forty-seven parking stalls. Forty-three are required by code, um, some of that area could be used for snow storage. Um, certainly, um, the applicant could truck off the snow off-site. Um, we do ask that the applicant provide a plan for snow storage. But those would be the options as well as within the landscaped area. However, um, because of the existing slopes, because it is a, a tight site, there, there really is limited, um, amount for onsite snow storage, with the exception of the, the parking space area.
Unfortunately, we will get snow, and we'll have to deal with it. And there's no, nothing in the, in this application that tells me how we will handle snow. Also, the letter from Time Properties LLC, um, I strongly recommend that the applicant at least contact these people because they're so close to each other. And as, uh, Commissioner Benke, um, noted earlier, as in grading, you're gonna go over to the neighbor's property. And their very, this letter that is sent to us here is, uh, speaks for itself. They don't care for that. Um, there are, in my opinion, Mr. Chair, there are too many unfinished business, um, in this application as presented to us tonight. And I would agree with Commissioner Benke again, that, uh, in two weeks, if it comes back to us, I think we can, most of these things can be taken care of. Um, I don't know your timeline, well, I mean, sometimes, uh, timeline is very, also very tight, but that's where I am. My, I am, uh, that's how I'm feeling right now, that I don't think I can support it as it is. Um, I probably will support it if it comes back to us in two weeks, with the unfinished business being taken care of. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. Um, Ms. Dean, real quick, I know you already mentioned this, but when did, was staff notified of two tenants to three? Was that today?
Um, no, it was in the, the past two weeks, about two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, okay.
Um, just to note, um, the, as stated, um, the extension is granted to October nineteenth, um, twenty-seventeen, so there is room in the calendar, um, if you felt necessary to, to bring this back to Planning Commission. I mean, the applicant is here, um, I'm not sure what their specific timeline is, um, as far as moving the project along or not, or if they're comfortable with a, that two-week, um, potential continuance.
Okay, Mr. Bradrick?
Thank you, Chair. Um, Ms. Dean, I'd like to just clarify a couple of questions in here. I, I would like to go on record that I'm probably not in favor of extending this. I believe this is all workable through staff. As I think about it, um, the letter, we did get a letter from the applicant, uh, of the property owner to the north. Um, as I said earlier, I am a little perplexed by the wording of recom, or of the, um, number two because it's not, in my opinion, specifically asking for anything. Uh, if the applicant says they can, um, uh, complete the renovation on their property and not impose on the property owner to the north in any way, shape, or form, if that means requiring to moving a retaining wall or whatever it may be within our code, then I, I'm a little perplexed at the need for the letter from the, I, I get that if they're going forward with a plan where they are going to be, um, imposing on to another property line, I, I, I understand that. And that's why I questioned kind of the wording of number two. After that, it seems like the applicant has, um, has no issue with our ephesus requirement of twenty-four inches. And once again, I would be in support of staff working with the applicant, whatever that, um, whatever that product would be, to be able to make that work. The parapet walls, um, I, like some other folks on our commission here, am a little concerned that the applicant didn't know what staff was talking about there, so that, that kind of concerns me. I do like the varying heights of the parapet wall today, it gives it some character. I do believe that if the continuous parapet wall would, would be required, could it be set back a few inches with a different material so it differentiates, so the applicant still gets what they're looking for signage? I understand the snow load, there are some variances here underneath some of the parapet wall extensions where snow can go underneath them. So I struggle in many cases if an application in front of us meets city code. It meets our parking requirements, it, it meets, you know, it's gone through staff. I guess I would be, um, not in favor of, um, I would be in favor of moving this application ahead with, um, with, uh, staff, uh, addressing these issues within city code. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Walter. Thank you, Commissioner Bradrick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, um, I, I think I'm in agreement with Commissioner Bradrick, um, uh, in, in supporting, keeping this moving on, having confidence that staff can work this out. I'm, I'm not, uh, this is not my business in terms of the, the, you know, the very specifics of the buildings. Um, I had to actually look up parapet here tonight before we started, being the first meeting that I've had that we've, uh, we've discussed that. So, um, to have a better understanding of it, so, um, I, and again, on some of these things, um, snow management plan and other things, I, 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 some of it, I'm not sure that it's our role to, to manage it to the complete, um, detail here as, as well as the relationship with, it's important that we have this and understand these issues. But, um, um, you know, it, we, we have the, the deviations written into the recommendations, I guess, is, is, is the point I'm trying to make. So I'm, I'm comfortable with moving this forward as well.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, Commissioner Benke.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I guess I'm always in a hard place because, Commissioner Walter, I mean, yeah, this is what I do, and I get that. And I almost think sometimes I'm gonna overthink it, and I apologize for that, members of the commission, because I, I'm always, I'm always in a struggle trying to not redesign this project for the, for the person, but yet, I feel like I need to point out the areas where I feel like it's going to help the city. in whatever form, whether it be helping staff get it through, or not having a problem with traffic or snow, or any of that kind of stuff. So, and I think that, that's a lot of the times where I come from. I do think that part of what we're supposed to do is to review the technical aspects. And while staff has presented them to us, we don't always have to agree that what's been given to us meets the code in every case, and in this case, I think that there's just too many details that I would rather have the developer take care of and show us before we turn it over to staff. And I think that's my point of view right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Benke. The applicant's been here and heard all of this, and staff has heard all of it as well. So I'm hoping that what has been talked about hasn't fallen on deaf ears there, there, there. So I would, um, I guess I would entertain a motion, be it for continuance in two weeks or approval, um, as it sits right now.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Benke.
I think I will start by, um, offering a motion to continue for two weeks, and let's see what happens. Yeah, basically to allow the applicant time to, um, review their plan against both the, uh, comments from staff and us, and the comments from the letter of the neighbor. And should the neighbor be totally taken out of the equation, then there's a recommendation that Commissioner Bradrick noted that could be eliminated from the, from the, uh, approval.
So we have a motion for a.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Singh.
For me, as I said earlier, there are too many unfinished business. And I, my conscience, I cannot support moving this ahead right now. And I would second the motion from Commissioner Benke, that it be brought back to us at our next meeting. And, uh, hopefully, uh, from now to then, staff can work, or the applicant can work with staff to bring resolution to some of these outstanding issues that I cannot support.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion at this time, from anybody? I feel like staff has a pretty good handle on this. I, I am not disagreeing with any of the statements that Commissioner Benke or Commissioner Singh has said. So I would stand for a vote on, uh, Commissioner Benke's, um, motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Nay.
And the motion is not passed.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Benke.
I would have a different motion then.
It is your pleasure.
Okay, I would then, uh, make a motion that Planning Commission recommends City Council approval of the PUD amendment to allow for building and site modifications, and a drive-through located at fourteen oh four County Road forty-two West with the following, uh, ten conditions where we amend condition four, to recommend that council consider adding masonry as the material within the twenty-four inches to grade, minimum twenty-four inches. That the, uh, condition number five stands as written, condition number six as written, condition number seven, uh, with the additional information that the goal would be to not have a single top of wall line. In other words, the parapet would continue to have definition from the different areas. And I'm putting too many words into that, I think you know what I mean, though.
I know what you're saying.
Uh, number eight, uh, that they come up with a cornice to, uh, enhance the top of the parapet. I, I guess I think I might need to have a question here with staff. Would they, would we normally want a cornice to include all of the parapets, or simply some of them? Does it, is, we don't put a restriction on that, do we?
Um, we, we don't have a specific requirement or restriction. I think, um, the goal from staff was to add more interest to the flat wall plane.
Right, so we wouldn't have to direct staff, uh, direct the applicant to put a single cornice around every top of the wall. It could be on the new part, it could be on the, the parts where the tenant names are, but give them some leeway for that. And then, uh, conditions nine and ten as written. And I think if anybody needs any clarifications.
So to button this up, um, number four, masonry, um, at the twenty-four inches to grade.
Minimum.
Minimum. Whereas right now, we have no clear definition, that could be anything. Number seven.
Chair, could I clarify?
Commissioner.
It can't be anything, Chair, it would be anything that's allowed by our code. Correct. What the building would allow. It couldn't be, it couldn't be plastic, or, you know, it would be what our code allows them. Our code says they can't have EFS within twenty-four inches of the ground, and we are just simply asking them to meet our code and to have a, a legal building product within twenty-four inches of the ground to separate the ground and the.
That was staff's recommendation.
Yes.
However.
Except that we found out that if they chose to use the wood, that would not fall under the EFS requirement, and they could finish it with wood at the bottom. Quite honestly, I think, I don't think that's consistent with what council has done previously with, uh, buildings like Enterprise, where they, uh, added masonry at the bottom of the wall. Uh, I do think that I would like to see masonry listed as a, um, masonry or other durable material. I'll phrase it that way, from our code, so that if we don't end up with a, a wood bottom on an EFS wall, for example. I mean, that's not likely to happen, but it's the example that I can think of.
I have it noted.
Number eight was reference to cornices.
The cornices along the parapet, and I guess I'm relying on our communication to, to the developer that it shouldn't simply be a single cornice type across the tops of the whole buildings unless that architecturally works for them. I wanted to offer it as, as, that there's the ability to add it, or put it on parts of it, not others. It's just, we have added the interest that our architectural guideline, uh, area wants. I don't know that I'd change it then, I don't know that I would change that one, I think it's just direction to staff.
As far as the architectural review tool goes, we don't have a stiff requirement that cornices be used.
Uh, that's, we do, that's, um, it's all on page three, variety of roof lines provided using variety of heights, parapets, cornices, or other design schemes. And in the examples that are shown, CVS, there's two different cornices. There's one on the element at the corner, and there's one on the rest of the, the roof line. The other one is sort of hard to work from, I guess, in terms of looking at it. You're looking at an even, uh, two different things there.
And Chair, if I may add, we do discuss it as well in, um, chapter nineteen in our special requirements, um, for business districts. Those details.
So a lot of this is addressed in our architectural review and through our ordinance.
Yeah, and it's also on page two at the top of, at the, in the top one at the bottom of that.
On the.
There's more examples there, too.
Okay. So where we're landing, Commissioner Benke, is you're asking to call out by name a product for the lower twenty-four inches of the building, and asking for some type of wording that indicates that there will be a break in the parapets surrounding the building.
Yep.
Is that your?
That's my motion then, yes.
We have a motion, do we have a second? All right. So that motion fails, I would stand for another motion.
Chair, I would like to make a motion.
Commissioner Bradrick.
Chair, I'd like to move that the Planning Commission recommend the City Council approval of the PUD amendment to allow for a building and site modifications and drive-through located at fourteen oh four County Road forty-two West with the following ten, uh, conditions as noted in our backlog.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second for Commissioner Walter, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
And the motion passes three to two. And that will go before the City Council on, Deb told me earlier, I already forgot.
Uh, that would be.
August twenty-second.
August twenty-second.
Tuesday, August twenty-second. All right. Our next item is a public hearing, which is an application of Menards Incorporated for a planned unit development amendment for proposed building additions and site modifications located at two seven zero zero Highway thirteen West. And Mr. Z Weber, our consulting planner, will be presenting.
Thank you, Chair and Planning Commission. Just to start with, uh, I am gonna cut to the chase a little bit on the motion, uh, requested, because there, um, there's a technicality that we don't really have much more of a choice. The, uh, Menards had originally proposed, uh, staying within their property. There became an issue, which I'll go into detail, uh, in a minute. And the, uh, solution was to buy ten feet from the neighboring property. With the public hearing notice, we only had the Menards plans to evaluate, evaluating what impacts would happen on the, uh, property that is selling the ten feet. It became apparent that there are two planning, uh, two PUD amendments that would be needed for that sale. The public hearing was not notified for that second property. So we're going to review the application, we have representative from Menards here. We can open the public hearing, to take any testimony. We can certainly have discussions about, uh, the proposal, you know, give Menards direction if, uh, there are any issues. But we're gonna be asking you to continue this public hearing to August twenty-eighth. So with that, I'll get into a little bit of detail about, uh, the proposal itself. So this property is located on the north side of the North Frontage Road to Highway thirteen. Uh, I will point out, um, you know, this kind of appendage in the northwest corner of the site, that is a regional stormwater pond, and what is not visible from the photograph, there is a large regional, uh, stormwater culvert, a box culvert, that goes through the far west side of the Menards property to, uh, serve that regional pond. So when the Menards first proposed to expand their outdoor storage to the west, the result, uh, was that the racking system would have been over the easement for that box culvert. As a result, um, engineering expressed their reluctance for that, and as so far as the, they wouldn't recommend, uh, approval, that's when Menards decided to contact the property owner to the west, the Fairchild's equipment property, purchase an additional ten feet. So that way, the, um, area will be paved, but it won't actually have the racking system on it. So this is the site plan. You will see on the far west side, that is the racking system that we are referring to. So one of the requests is to expand the outdoor storage area by about twenty-nine thousand square feet. Then the second request is to expand the warehouse, uh, by about nineteen thousand square feet. So just to go over the site a little bit, um, the existing parking lot is to the south of the building. There is the existing store, which has some areas to the west and north that are currently overhung, but not part of the, uh, temperature-controlled part of the store. But it is all, uh, part of the same, uh, footprint and, uh, perimeter. The, uh, existing outdoor warehouse is unheated, and that would continue on the same, that's what's gonna be expanded. And then again, uh, the outdoor storage will be increased. Before I leave this, they have proposed these three additional islands in red to help alleviate the green space that, uh, will be lost due to the additional building and the additional, um, outdoor storage area. Just to show a little bit more specifically what, uh, the issue is here with this box culvert, that western forty feet of the existing Menards property, um, contains that box culvert, and that drains, uh, quite a sizable portion of the city, all the way up to Crystal Lake. So this is a very important regional infrastructure. I think the engineering department has been, um, understanding of Menards' request and, and found, uh, what is a workable solution for both the engineering department and, uh, Menards. But as we stated, or I stated at the beginning of my presentation, at that time of that submittal, uh, we did not have the opportunity to review the Fairchild's equipment property, and that will be the piece that will have to be brought back on August twenty-eighth. So to go over the specifics of the request, the site today, um, has the racking equipment essentially right on the edge of the forty-foot easement. Here we see the box culvert in question, uh, this is the current property line. What, um, Menards will do is basically buy this green space from Fairchild's that is along the edge of their, uh, existing parking lot. There is some infrastructure that will be, um, addressed here. There is the existing stormwater, uh, that drains the site of Menards basically from the east to the west and from the south to the north, due to the expansion of the, uh, the warehouse, some of that will need to be modified. So this is the erosion control permit, uh, permit or plan, and shown in, uh, basically this shaded color is the area that will be disturbed, uh, to construct this addition. And then this shows the demolition plan that not only, uh, includes a part of the parking lot that will be removed, but, uh, this storm, this part of the stormwater pipe will need to be reconstructed, as will this segment, because the warehouse will be placed over that. So the grading plan, uh, just kind of shows that, uh, the, the same pattern will continue, the stormwater will, uh, drain towards the north and the west. This is the, uh, proposed warehouse. What we have here is what's facing south, so essentially towards the building, it's, it's an open warehouse on that side. This next side is the north part of the building, so that exists today and will remain unchanged. It's a, a concrete wall, uh, facing the north. Here, you can see how the existing warehouse with its, um, peaked roof, uh, essentially there'll be a shed roof added to, uh, create the new warehouse space, a new, uh, opening for the warehouse, and that would be sided with, uh, the same green, uh, raked steel panels that exist today. Uh, this is a closer example of that emerald-green access panels, the panels that will be on the new parts of the warehouse. This is the racking system in question, that was the, the part that, uh, the engineering department said, that racking system must be outside of the easement. It's about, you know, it's four feet wide, uh, for the racking system itself, but it's got a little bit of curb. And then you can see, uh, on the back, there is, uh, the two-by-six vertical wood siding, so it's about five feet in depth total. And again, this shows the green teat, treat lumber that will be used for, uh, the, the wall itself. There also will be lights that will be installed, so the lights will go all the way to, uh, the west side of the property. Uh, and then this is the provided photometric plan that will, um, show that it will meet the city code when it is finished. Couple other things, not really in the exhibits that I wanted to discuss. Couple other things, not really in the exhibits that I wanted to discuss, that relate to the conditions are, are that, excuse me, one second, sorry. There's an existing PUD that has five existing conditions, those will remain in effect with the exception that the parking will actually go down. So that parking requirement with the proposed parking lot islands, twelve parking stalls will be removed. So where there's currently four hundred and ninety-four parking stalls, it will be four hundred and eighty-two parking stalls. Staff is recommending that that be approved. The Menards has been there since two thousand and five, there is no, with the exception of this open, or this heated pickup area, there isn't an increase into the retail portion of the store. So since there's no parking issue to date, the staff finds that acceptable. So looking at the existing five conditions, the other four, signs, building materials, screening wall, and the green space, well, actually the green space will need to be addressed here. I will just point out that the original PUD was that the applicant provide that twenty-five percent green space that's required. So the request from the applicant was the green space requirement be reduced to the twenty-three point eight that they are proposing today. Staff does not support that. Additional landscape islands could be installed, but the likelihood that that would resolve the entirety of the green space is unlikely, that it would require an additional seventeen landscape islands if you were to actually meet that twenty-five percent. But there are, there is a section of the code that provides a list of alternatives that can be used to make up green space, and one of them is a green roof. So staff is recommending that Menards reevaluate not only the landscape islands, but also the other alternatives that are allowed by code to try to achieve that twenty-five percent. The building perimeter green space, the, that is essentially going to be expanded upon, there's going to be, there's no way for additional green space to be created with, or perimeter building green space with the north and the west side of the building being the outdoor, the paved outdoor area. The rest of the perimeter of the building and even the fences are currently landscaped. So that one is being recommended for support from staff. We discussed the parking, and that that would go down, twelve stalls, that may even go down further based on staff's recommendation to not allow the green space requirement, additional parking stalls may be lost to make up that twenty-five percent green space. Accessory stretch, structure setback, that racking system that I mentioned, they're buying ten feet of property from the Fairchild's equipment, but the racking and the fencing will be about five feet, so the setback will actually be five feet. Staff doesn't think that affecting the Fairchild's parking lot to try to gain some additional setback really achieves any recognizable difference from where there is today, so staff does support that one. And then finally, the building materials would be continued from the previous condition, or the previous PUD, that on the, essentially the east and west side of the warehouse building, that that would be allowed to be one hundred percent metal. We did actually confirm with Menards, we had stated incorrectly in the staff report that there is no need for approval of the minor changes to the overhangs, the area of the overhang, but they're actually proposing that to be that same green accent material. So it will end up being more than twenty-five percent of the walls, so you'll likely see on the, on the twenty-eighth that that condition would apply to the north and west sides of the main retail building as well. That is my presentation, I would take any questions that you may have, and I may have pointed out earlier, but a representative from Menards is here to answer any of your questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. My only question of clarification has to do with the green space.
Yes.
And I know you, can you just quickly, Menards has what right now for green space percent? They've met their requirement?
Yep, they're right at their requirement at twenty-five percent. It's about two hundred and thirty-one thousand square feet of green space.
And by this expansion, they're going to drop down to?
They're going to drop down to twenty-three point eight percent, but part of that percentage is, the area actually increased in size by about, I believe it's about twelve thousand square feet by the ten-foot area that they purchased, and that's going to be, you know, that's going to cover that entire forty-foot wide easement. So the number is, it gets down to two hundred and twenty thousand, hundred, excuse me, two hundred and twenty thousand square feet, the percentage would be twenty-three point eight, so a one-point-two percent deviation.
And the islands would get them back up to that twenty-five percent?
Those three islands gets it to the twenty-three point eight percent.
Okay.
We did the math to figure out how to get up to twenty-five percent, there would need to be seventeen more islands added.
Okay, so part of this is deviating from the twenty-five and allowing twenty-three point eight?
That is the applicant's request.
And staff's recommendation is to deny that?
Correct. I, I think seventeen may be unachievable, but probably some more of them can be, but the city code does provide provisions for alternative forms of landscaping, including green roofs, so that could get them up to the twenty-five percent.
And the reason I ask that is because when I look at the Fairchild equipment property as it sits currently, they're at twenty-one point three percent, and with the sale of this property to Menards, that's going to be at twenty point five percent.
That's correct.
And is staff asking us to approve that deviation at twenty point five percent?
We haven't, we analyzed what is the, the issues that are causing a PUD amendment, we're not at this time making a recommendation on those two deviations that would need to be applied for. I think that's all the more reason why it would be important for Menards to stay up closer to that twenty-five, that the entire area is going to be decreased by this approval, so.
Okay. Then the only point for that question was, I just want to make sure that we're consistent, because if we're going to, in the same breath, say, need to be to twenty-five here, but it's okay to be at twenty point five here, just, I want to make sure that we're on the same page. That was?
If I could just interject, for the Fairchild property, actually, when that was purchased from Menards, they did, they remodeled their building and site, and they increased their green space pretty significantly. So it doesn't currently meet the twenty-five percent. What we don't know is specifically considering both pieces, what the exact numbers are going to be. One of the benefits to the Menards project when that was first built was that they exceeded the green space requirement. So we did identify from the very beginning that green space was going to be an issue, reducing that below the twenty-five percent standard. I just wanted to give you a little bit of background of the other parcels, and when this is brought back to you, if the Planning Commission chooses to continue this as recommended by staff, we will have those specific numbers to you. Also, this is a situation too where the Fairchild property, they're trying to work, you know, with the neighbor to allow them to purchase land to help their situation. The impacts, that will need to be evaluated by Planning Commission and Council, but Fairchild isn't doing anything, you know, to reduce theirs, they're not expanding or changing their site, they're trying to work with Menards on the project. And you do have, there's also the lot to the south where the liquor store is located, all three of those lots are within the planned unit development. So there is an opportunity, if Planning Commission and Council feels appropriate, where you can do transfer of, like, the amount of green space, you know, within the PUD setbacks within the PUD, those types of things.
Chair, if I could add on to that? While Fairchild's percentage is going down, that land area is being added in to the total land area for Menards, so if we had Menards meet twenty-five percent, the before and after will be identical.
Say that again.
Well, the, the, well, actually, no, I take that back, that wouldn't be true, because there would be, it would, seventy-five percent of that area would be, would be covered.
Just, like I said, the point of the question was just to make sure we're consistent for all the players involved here, and I'll, I'm not going to press that right now, because this is coming, well, if we vote to continue it, we'll probably get more, some votes on everything. So I would turn it over to the Commission for any questions for Mr. Weber. Commissioner Bradrick?
Thank you, Chair. I know this is going to come in front of us, and I have no problem recommending, I do have a question from an operator standpoint, I certainly understand why they can't build the racking on top of the stormwater piece, but with the original PUD required the fire lane and the entrance and the gate that the fire trucks could use, was there any thought process in putting into allowing them to move that gate on top of the easement for the stormwater tract to give them a, maybe they don't want to expense that, but that fence line for them was, had to be broken with a, with a gate so that path would allow for safety, and it seems to me like you can't build something on top of a culvert, so why don't we allow them to have, just a suggestion, why don't we allow them to have their emergency exit on top of the culvert?
If I may, that is the case on the north fence. Currently, the north fence does not have a gate.
I'm talking about the south fence.
Right. But, and I'm just going to add for information, that the north fence will now have a gate, and that's really more not for fire, it's more engineering to be able to access the easement if, if they need to. But I, I think the same logic would apply, that if the gate got moved over the easement on the south side, that would be acceptable, but, you know, as they show kind of their travel path on the site plan, as well as, that's an additional cost, there is no requirement.
I have a lot of faith in staff, I'm going to, it's just a suggestion, and from an operator standpoint, it seems like they could, we could benefit them and allow that. I'll be anxiously awaiting the PUD. The Fair, the Fairchild PUD, if, if Commission remembers, was fairly complicated.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradrick.
Do you have your word cut out for you? Chair, I would be, I would like to make a motion.
I have to open the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Is there any, any other questions before I open the public hearing? Any other questions for staff? No questions? Okay, so I will open the public hearing, and if anybody would like to approach the microphone, if you could give us your name and address for the record?
Sure, Rodney Wacken with Menard Incorporated, fifty-one oh one Menard Drive, Eau Claire, Wisconsin, five-four-seven oh three. Thank you for your time this evening, and kind of giving you a little background on what's driving the project, as we've recently updated our prototype, so all of our stores are getting some additional warehouse space, some additional lumberyard, and some of the changes you see to the garden center and rear of the store. The changes specifically to the rear of the store to help capture some online sales that obviously we're trying to drive and stay up with some of the times as they're coming along. So that back area there will just be receiving, so if you ordered something online or from another Menards location, it'd be shipped to your store, whether that's Burnsville or Maple Grove or wherever, and then you'd be able to pick it up from your hometown store location. Going back to the reduction in landscaping, we tried to incorporate some additional plantings as well as the islands. Obviously, I think if we look at it and try to just picture seventeen additional islands in there, it would get clustered and would obviously impact some of the guests as we're constructing those. So we did add the three additional islands, and then in each island that's existing there today, we are proposing additional landscaping, as well as landscaping along the new fence. In total, it's about a hundred and fifty new plantings between bushes and trees to try to help offset that one-point-two percent that we would be low on the green space requirements.
Thank you. Is there any other questions for the applicant? No questions? Thank you for coming on tonight.
Thanks.
If there's anybody else who would like to speak to this, please come to the front, and there is nobody, so I will continue the public hearing, actually, I have to motion for a continuance of the public hearing, so I would stand for a motion.
You have a motion?
I made it.
You were working on it.
Mr. Brad?
Chair, I move that the Planning Commission table this, I'm sorry, continue this application for further review.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And that will continue on August twenty-eighth, Monday.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I think, Deb, maybe you can speak to it too, with that going to the next meeting, there's also going to be a vacation easement that goes along with this property, just so it doesn't blindside anybody with that easement. They'll be submitting a survey drawing to vacate that easement from the property to the west to take that property.
Who's "they"?
Well, Menard, with, Menards will provide documentation to vacate that easement, which would be approved by the Planning Commission.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll include more discussion about that, it's actually the Fairchild property on their east, along their east lot line, has got a planted drainage and utility easement, and that is what will need to be vacated.
We'll vacate that, but it'll end up back on to the, we don't need it at all anymore. Okay.
Very good. Our next item is a public hearing for the City of Burnsville. Ordinance Amendment to City Code Title III Business Regulations, Chapter thirty-two, Special Events, Ordinance Number one-four-one-seven, Pending Codification, Related to Legacy Event Signs and Banners, and City Code Ten Zoning, Chapter thirty, Signs, General Provisions Related to Placement of Signs in the Right-of-Way. I did it.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair members of the Commission. So many of you may recall the entire process that came before City Council and Planning Commission actually a number of times. So prior to two thousand and six, legacy event signs were grouped into the Community Event Sign Code Requirements, and at the direction of council, they directed staff to take a look at our current code requirements and to work with the legacy event organizers, currently the International Festival and the Fire Muster as the lead legacy events, and come up with a plan for potential code amendments. We went through a lengthy process, different renditions of that, and in August of two thousand and sixteen, an interim ordinance was approved, just for clarification, legacy event, the difference between community events and legacy events. Legacy event signs were allowed to be placed, or banners were allowed to be placed within city right-of-way, which are not allowed for any other type of community event. Signs, up to fifty signs were allowed thirty days, signs, or banners were allowed thirty days prior to the legacy event, and then additional signage, basically unlimited or limited by the number of streets in town, could be placed seventeen prior, seventeen days prior to the event. And that up to two signs per intersection versus one sign per intersection could be included. That was approved, adopted again pending codification. What happened, why you see signs move from What happened, why you see signs move from Title Ten, Chapter Thirty, to Title Three, as you may recall, a few months ago, we moved special event criteria, which included community event signs and legacy event signs and other temporary signs, from Title Ten to Chapter Three. So that's why you see a lot of verbiage in the public hearing notice. So when we did that unintentionally, we had adopted most of the code language into that Title Three, except for one provision within Title Ten, speaking to right-of-way, the definition, I'm sorry, not the definition, but a provision within Title Ten. So, I'll jump to that. So again, a majority of it went to Title Three. We did have a one-year check-in with city council on July eleventh. Prior to that check-in, we checked in with the International Festival and the Fire Muster organizers, and they had a couple of suggestions for potential modifications to the ordinance. One requirement is that the application is submitted sixty days prior to an event. The representatives mentioned forty-five days before the event seemed more reasonable. We presented that to council. They were all in agreement that that was reasonable as well. The other requirement was for removal of signs from twenty-four hours after an event to forty-eight hours after an event. Again, it seemed reasonable, if you're going to put out all of these signs, reasonable amount of time to collect the signs after the event. So that is before you as well as, that is before you as part of the proposal. In addition, so, everything in Title Three has been technically approved as a ordinance pending codification, with the exception of the proposed red line language, which is before each night as an amendment. And then we have our, the Section Two of the ordinance that discusses placement in right-of-way. That's basically the same language as you reviewed as part of the interim ordinance. However, it's still considered an interim ordinance. That was the only section that was not fully, I guess, approved, and so we're asking tonight that the planning commission approve the red line version that's within Title Three, the changes that are proposed, as well as the Section Two within Title Ten. Probably seems confusing, but certainly if there's any questions, I certainly stand for questions, but staff does recommend, that the planning commission recommend approval of the proposed ordinance to city council as presented.
Thank you. Is there any questions for staff? Commissioner Singh?
Mr. Chair, not a question, I think just a comment. Some of these things we already discussed, I mean, these are things that we have already recommended, and I think it's just the staff did a very good job in putting it together, having heard from city council, and so I think this is acceptable to me.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. Any other questions? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing, and anybody that would like to speak to this, please come forward and give us your name and address. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing, and if there are no other questions for staff, I would stand for a motion.
Chair, I beg to, to move that the planning commission recommend approval of the proposed ordinance changes that the city council has presented.
We have a motion, we have a second. Second, by Commissioner Benke. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion passes unanimously. Our next item is updates, and our next planning commission meeting is August twenty-eighth here. I don't have a date for our next comp plan meeting.
The next comprehensive plan meeting is to review the draft plan, and that will be on August twenty-first, and then we also have the draft agenda for your next meeting as well.
Thank you.
August twenty-four, six p.m., right here.
Yes, correct.
Is there any updates from the commission? Updates? I would like to wish a belated fifty-fifth birthday to Commissioner Singh publicly tonight.
Fifty-one?
Happy birthday.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
If there are no other updates, I would stand for a motion for adjournment.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Same sign. Thank you, and have a wonderful evening.
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five.